We will now reconvene the special city council meeting. Ms. City Attorney, do we have anything to report out?
Yes, item number one on the closed session agenda, the city council received a staff's report but took no formal action. And item number two, the city council unanimously approved a settlement of 25,695 to be paid to the city by City Boar and Construction for repair of city main damage. And that ends the closed session report.
Thank you. The special city council meeting is now adjourned. Before I begin the regular city council meeting, I would like to inform members of the public that I will be taking public comment for non-agenda public comment and for items on the agenda via our teleconference line. Those wishing to address the city council may call 562-299-6622 when I make that announcement. Persons speaking are limited to a maximum of three minutes. Your comments will be recorded and you will be advised when your time has ended. Once your time has ended, the call will be immediately disconnected. For those who have submitted their comments via email, your comments will be read into the record at the appropriate times during the meeting, and no additional public comment will be permitted via teleconference. I would like to call to order the regular city council meeting. City Clerk Duarte, will you please take role?
Mayor, before I call the role, I would like to inform members of the public that Councilmember Ashton is participating in this council meeting via teleconference. Councilmember Ashton?
Present.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Here.
Councilmember Saab?
Here.
Mayor Protem Frometa?
Present.
And Mayor Pacheco?
Present.
I would now like to have Councilmember Rick Rodriguez say the invocation for us.
Will you please rise? And join me. Dear Lord, today as we gather here at this place to do the business of our city, we pray, Lord, for your guidance and your direction and your protection, Lord. Lord, we thank you that our city is a city such that loves you, Lord, and respects the idea of God, country, and family. Lord, we pray for our schools and our police and our fire departments and our other staff members and management, Lord, in this building that serve our residents each and every day. We pray for their protection as well, Lord. Lord, we thank you for calling our names to serve our people in Jesus' name. Amen.
I would now like to have Councilmember Alex Saab lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Sure. Right hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible, liberty, and justice for all.
Please be seated. Now is the time for city council member announcements, request for future agenda items, conference meeting reports. I will start off to my far left, it's nice to see you, with Councilmember Alex Saab.
Madam Mayor, nice to see you too. I'll keep my comments brief. We had the opportunity about a week ago to reopen Golden Park. It was a very nice, very nice event. Unfortunately, I know a few people have asked why, you know, we didn't do a more formal ribbon cutting and obviously we're still under the orders from the county that we can't have events with greater than 10 people. So for that reason, the council was able to, we weren't able to do that. We are looking forward to in the future when, you know, when this pandemic is over to do some celebrations at some of the parks and the city areas that are done. But that one in particular was a special one because they really needed some work and, you know, a nice walking trail and community center was redone, new bathrooms and basketball court and some shelters that look really, really good. And so the community, I know, especially in that area, are real happy with it. So I just want to thank all the staff that was involved in that particular, city manager and Gilbert Leves and Assistant City Manager Jonas Gueye and Parks and Rec Director and everyone involved. So having said that, just to keep my comments real brief, just a couple items for staff. If we can maybe bring back for us to consider a six, maybe a six-month extension for permits and entitlements, I think for businesses and homeowners who have not been able to, have been affected by COVID-19, I think, I think there are some businesses and some, you know, people who are doing additions to their homes or new businesses or developments or whatever may be, sometimes, you know, they've been, maybe it may have been delayed and I'd hate to have those people have to reapply and pay for the permits all over again or resubmit their, their applications. You know, I know most of them are good, I think, for a year, but it could be that that year happened during, during this period. So I want to make sure we help those people as much as possible. So if we can bring that back, I think that for council consideration, that would be a great thing. And then the second one, I know I've already mentioned it to Community Development Director Aldo Shinner, but I did want to, because I said I would, I did receive complaints from several of the, I shouldn't say several, from the HOA of the, the community condominium community group across from Raising Canes over on Woodruff. And they, they expressed their displeasure with the amount of trash, the, the noise at night, late at night, some people doing donuts in the parking lot, and also just the lack of, of enforcement, I guess you could say, from the, the security company at Stonewood. And I have noticed it as well, I go there, go through there on the weekends, sometimes ride my bike, and I do see quite a bit of trash. So I know that we're already working with them, but I did promise them I'd bring it up and, and I appreciate, you know, our police department, I know is aware of it, our chief and, and our community development director. So I just want to put that on the record. And then thirdly, I did, I have noticed, and I did get a complaint from, from a resident, I did went, checked it out, she, and, and I, it's true, there have been an increase in people parking their, their cars on the lawns of houses. If we can just make sure that, I know it's, obviously it's not, it's illegal to do so, but if we can make sure that we, you know, have our, whoever may be, either our court enforcement or police, just keep an eye on that. Want to make sure that we don't, we don't make that something that's not normal here in our community and really does just affect the values and affects the quality life of the neighborhood. So we can just make sure that we enforce that. And that concludes my comments, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And next up, we have Mayor Protem Claudio Ferreira.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, everybody. It's nice to see all of you here again today. It's, it's always a pleasure to conduct the people's business and of course, have you all here present. We, I had an opportunity to be part of the Rotary Club last week, and they invited me to speak on some of the things that the city is doing in relation to the pandemic. And as you know, the beginning of this month, we reopened City Hall for the public. And also, as you know, part of my day job is to, is being part of a healthcare system. And we are continuing to see the numbers increase and we want to continue to be supportive of our businesses and continue to support our economy as we move forward. But at the same time, we need to continue to be mindful that this is still not over. And as has just been said by Councilmember Saab, some of the events that had been planned in advance for this year have had to be canceled due to the pandemic. And as we continue to work on some of the reopenings of our parks and other things, unfortunately, we will not be able to have those be open to the public for, for those obvious reasons. I think we're, all of us are quite fatigued, I think that's, that's the right word. We want to be able to go back to normal and conduct our lives as normally as we can. Unfortunately, we continue to see those numbers increase and yes, testing continues to happen. And so we, we are seeing more testing done and therefore more cases are popping up and people are affected in various ways. Some people require hospitalization, others do not. But nonetheless, in Downey, as of today, we have 1,308 cases. And again, those numbers will continue to increase. I think from a, from a city, from a government standpoint, what we can continue to do is to remind everybody and including ourselves, we have our, our facial coverings and be able to continue to, to run our businesses as normally as we can, but following those precautions. It is indicating the numbers that we're seeing from a hospital standpoint is that the age number that is now being very heavily hit is the 20 to 30 age group. And so as, as the holiday, the Fourth of July holiday is fast approaching and we see people hosting large gatherings, whether in their homes or, or other places, I think that's, that's a concern. So I think from, from the standpoint of what we can do is to continue to hopefully carry on the message, which our website and our various social media platforms continue to do, to please practice that social distancing as we try to kick back the economy and we try to do the various things we want to do, but please to be cautious doing those things. It's been said, Downey is a strong city, and I think I mentioned this at our last council meeting, we are so fortunate to have a city where there's 70 churches. And many of these churches have resumed activity following the guidelines set by the governor and followed the guidelines set by the county. But we also have also 94 service clubs and, and what, what a tremendous force that is, people engaged and involved in this community. With that, we also have 222 Neighborhood Watch groups. And we will continue as hopefully these, this pandemic, we, we see the end of it hopefully soon, the latter part of this year, in the beginning of, of next year with vaccine in sight, we can renew some of those activities. I do have a couple of items for staff and I think Councilmember Saab alluded to a couple of those. One is the, the groups that gather in some of our parking lots, and I think I've brought this up to staff before, and I know we, we are trying our best to do this. People, as I said, are getting fatigued, there's not a lot to do these days, but certainly there's a lot of young people in our community. And they gather at different times of the evening, in different times of our, of our city, from the landing to the promenade to Stonewood Mall. And I, I personally have witnessed, I've, you know, driven up and down Lakewood and some of the main thoroughfares and have seen numbers of vehicles racing past me. And so I think we really need to be, I, I would ask our law enforcement officers to really be on the lookout for that. They're, they're, you know, good people, good kids, but we want to make sure that they stay out of trouble, they're not, they don't hurt themselves or hurt others. Also, over the last several weeks, since after the Memorial Day holiday, we have seen quite an increase in the discharge of illegal fireworks throughout our city. And more so as the holiday approaches. I know I was woken about, you know, 1:30 in the morning the last couple of nights and by just a barrage of, of really loud fireworks, for a minute it sounded like gunfire. And, and that was quite scary. So I, again, for, we, we need to, you know, look at, I know we've went out and have continued to do news releases and PSAs alerting the public that the illegal fireworks, the fines will be enforced, but if, can we can really have our, our law enforcement officials be on the lookout for that. Also, some neighborhoods have received numerous complaints via email and also via phone call from residents who are really tired of neighbors who have excessively loud music throughout the day and into the night and over the weekend, and it's nonstop. And so I think we need to look at our, the violation of the noise ordinance in some of these individuals. And while our law enforcement officers do go and, and give warnings to these particular homes that continue to be in violation of our noise ordinance, I think we also need to move further into what, you know, what can be done in terms of fining or some of the, some of the consequences. Because as, as I've been told, some of these neighbors feel hostage in their own blocks because these neighbors continue to have these excessively loud gatherings and that go well into 3, 4, 5 a.m., Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So if we can have staff look into that, that would really be appreciated. Madam Mayor, that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Councilmember Sean Ashton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A lot of the things I wanted to bring up were brought up by my council colleagues, especially with the fireworks and the noise ordinance. So I'll defer to staff on those, I brought those up already. So thank you for the time, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Next up, we have Councilmember Rick Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for allowing me to sit in this seat. First off, I'd like to say Happy belated Father's Day for those fathers in the room. Hopefully you enjoyed your, your Father's Day weekend with your kids and grandkids. You know, because we're under this stay-at-home order for the most part, we don't spend a lot of time in City Hall like before. But today I was, I had an opportunity to get here early and return phone calls, reach out to residents via phone. And, and I have to tell you that I was pleasantly surprised, I responded to a phone request earlier today about homeless, it started about homeless, but she really wanted to drive the point home and I asked if I could use her name in, in this reporting out this evening. Her name is Leslie Samrana, she lives in, in Sean's district. But she told me to please thank Downey Police Department, how much she appreciates the police, our police officers, and she mentioned our police department several times, and she's so proud that we have our police department. And so she wanted to make sure that I made mention of that this evening. And I asked her about, she said they have a very strong Neighborhood Watch and they're very involved with the city. And those really are residents, those are true residents that they want to get involved and engaged. You know, also during this time, I'm trying to spend a little time doing some exercises, getting a little stronger and healthier, and so I've been walking Apollo Park. And I have to tell you that Apollo Park is beautiful. It's, it's beautiful. I walk that track a couple times a week with another, another former mayor, he and I walk together. And, you know, walking that track and watching our kids play soccer and practice the league or baseball and basketball and workout, it's like what we all talked about. It's really the vision that was thought about during the design of that park, they're using every square inch of it. The only thing I would ask that if we could, and I don't know if this is impossible or not, but I noticed that there were a couple of adults playing regular hardball baseball on the diamond and, and they're hitting the ball out to the, where the kids playing soccer. That's a potential threat that could, that could hurt somebody. So if we have somebody just take a look at that, somebody one of the rec leaders, whatever, if they happen to see these guys, and they're, they're, these guys are real good, by the way, they're, they're really feeling the ball well, hitting the ball well. But I'd hate to see some young, unexpected child playing soccer get hit in the head with a baseball, you know. And that's it, Madam Mayor, just wanted to kind of report some good things.
Thank you very much. So welcome, everyone, welcome to our council meeting this evening. I thank you all for participating today. I'd like to start off by thanking our Executive Director for the Chamber of Commerce, Michael Calvert. Thank you for joining us today. Yes, that's you? So as was previously mentioned, we are seeing a lot more reopenings happening throughout our, our city, throughout the county, and of course, throughout the state. Just recently, we had the reopenings of nail salons and gyms. And I want to remind everyone that we still need to wear our facial coverings. It has been a requirement for Los Angeles County and is now a requirement throughout the state as of last week. Our numbers are continuing to climb, that's because of more testing, more people are out and about, going to restaurants. So there's many factors as to why we're seeing an increase in number, but our hospitalizations still are fairly down, so at least we're safe in that area. But again, everybody needs to do their part. We need to ma, we need to maintain our social distancing, we need to wear facial coverings because it is important to keep our most vulnerable communities safe. Also, as was previously mentioned, we had the pleasure of attending a virtual ribbon cutting at Golden Park. There was a lot of exciting improvements that were, that were done, as was previously mentioned. And this is exciting because that's, I live near Golden Park and it was nice to see this park remodeled and all the improvements that were done at the park. I also have some exciting news to, to share. Last week, I had my interview to, for the, for the League of California Cities to be on the State Board. And fortunately, I was selected. I will be serving as Director-at-Large for the League of California Cities State Board. What this means is it's an advocacy, advocacy group. And we listen to various bills and we decide whether we should support, oppose, or stay neutral on a particular bill. And the reason why this is important for Downey is because now I have a voice at the state level and it helps with our city to guide the, the state, on the state level in regards to bills that may have an impact on our city. So it's, it's really nice that I get this great opportunity to serve on the State Board. And also, I did want to bring up fireworks, that's a complaint that I've been receiving as well. I don't know if there's a way that we can set up, I know with, on the app, we, we can report fireworks. I was wondering if, if a resident can make it anonymous because sometimes if it's a neighbor, they feel a little weird telling on their neighbor.
I, I'm not sure exactly how the app is, but I think if they, if they call in, certainly they can do it anonymously. I don't know if any of you read the LA Times today, but there was an article precisely on this. It's no coincidence that you're seeing a spike in the number of calls that you get for fireworks, it's happening quite frankly, throughout the region. And some of it is due to the fact that people are, are off of work or have time and can cross the, cross state line, pick up fireworks and come home with boredom, there's a lot of potential reasons why it is. The truth of the matter is, I will tell you, I've been, as long as I've been here, this is an issue that has come up every year, and every year it's the same thing. And we've increased the fines, we've, we've done those things. It's very, very difficult when you have legal fireworks and illegal fireworks going off at the same time to distinguish who is doing what and how, and you got to catch, you know, the people that are doing that. And as you saw last year, we were very fortunate that our fire department was on scene, that there was a fire that ended up hitting a, I believe, a convalescent home that caught fire. I, I think that, you know, you know, we've battered around ideas about how to tackle this issue. And I know that there are those that, that are for fireworks and not fireworks, but it's certainly something I think that we need to come back and visit and, and take a look about, you know, what are their options, options are available for everybody to take a, take a look at. I think we've exhausted the things that we've tried to do, so we have to probably look at potential other alternatives for, for you to consider moving forward.
Can we also look into seeing if we can make it anonymous also on the app? I don't know if that's a possibility.
Sure, we'll look into that.
Okay, thank you. And that concludes my comments. So next up, we have several public hearings. We have, in fact, six public hearings. The first one is to adopt a proposed budget for 2020, 2021 fiscal year, adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Downey adopting the fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget and the age, the annual appropriations limit. The hour having arrived, the public hearing is now open. City Clerk Duarte, do you have proof of publication?
Yes, Mayor.
Do I have a second, a motion and a second to receive and file?
So moved.
So ordered by the mayor. City Manager Leves, do we have a staff report?
Madam Mayor, the staff report will be given by Anil Gandhi. Just for the public and for those who may be streaming this, we've, this is a little bit anticlimactic because we actually did do a workshop, a detailed workshop with all the department heads, one by one, giving you all a presentation. We also had one-on-one discussions with all of you in terms of where we're at with the budget and how we got to where we're going. But essentially, what we're presenting to you, which is no short of miraculous work that all the department heads have done in this, is to present you with a balanced budget, where many cities are not able to do that. And that really goes to the fact that we've been able to really watch what we do, measure what we do. The process starts with you all back in January, we do our goal setting and making sure that the priorities of the community are, are in those. So we're, we're here today with, with a budget that represents the, the council's priorities and gets us to a balanced budget. Certainly, there's uneasy waters ahead, but for the remainder of this year and next year, we have a balanced budget. It gives us some time, a landing pad in order to make sure that we watch things moving forward and see how we do, and we pivot and adjust as we need to. So with that, I will kick it off to Mr. Gandhi and he can go ahead and go through a brief presentation on the budget.
Thank you, sir. Alicia, and you get the slides.
Over here, Anil.
Oh, sorry. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and council members. The item in front of you today is our adoption of our fiscal year 2021 budget. As the city manager said that we, we already done a workshop on this budget, we met with each council offices, we also had a budgets working subcommittee that we met with you. So this is the fourth time we are bringing the seven numbers back to you, so my presentation is going to be very brief. So this is the more important of the budget document. This is the executive summary for the upcoming fiscal year. We started about 30, $34 million of fund bal, fund balance reserve. Our operating revenue for the fiscal year 2021 is 106 million. Our operating expenditure is 98 million, leaving off a surplus of 8.6 million and closing the year pre-COVID at 43 million in fund balance reserves. This is pre-COVID. Now we'll do the second part of the budget. What is the impact of the COVID on the budget for the next 15 months? For this fiscal year 1920, we are projecting a deficit of 4.6 million in reduction in revenue. Next year, we are projecting $8 million in reduction in revenue, bringing to 12.7, close to 13 million dollars, ending the fund balance with 30 million dollars. I will talk about the COVID in a couple of next slides. So the, the budget is broken down into two parts, pre-COVID and post-COVID. So the numbers I'm going to present is going to be the pre-COVID. This would have been our budget if there was no COVID, of 106 million dollars. Our sales tax would have been 29 million, our property tax at 29 million, and then the utility users tax 6.7 and so on. And I'll go over the line items with you on the revenue part. So this is the revenue. We, we see increase in property tax at about 7%. There is no impact on COVID on, on the property tax, so that number stays. Sales tax number, we are projecting 29 million, that includes major S. An increase, if, if there was no COVID, we would have gained 1.2 million compared with prior year. Utility users tax, a decrease of 150,000. And that's, we got three, three, three areas that makes up the, three components of the utility users taxes, gas, electric, and telephone. Gas and electric are up, but the telephone is going down, and that's because of the landlines are getting obsolete. And, and that, and that's, that's for the utility user tax. Franchise tax remains the same, JPCC and ambulance, pretty much no change. Other, no change. Charges to other fund, no change. And transfer from other ones, 1.3 million. This is the transfers between the funds, and, and one of the big transfers is gas tax money coming into the general fund because general fund, funds part of the gas tax operations. And you'll see there on the expenditure side too. So, so our increase in revenue is about 12, oh, sorry, sale of property, 8.6 million. That includes the 10 million, the difference was 8.6, sorry. 10.6 is the back 20, which we'll receive in December, by December. And, and that makes up the 106 million, increase of 12 million. Now, this is the impact of COVID on revenue. Now, the major portion of the COVID number between the two fiscal years, if you look at the last column, total column for the sales tax is 80 million. And those numbers are estimated by our outside consultant, sales tax consulting firm called Hindalai or Delamas. Those numbers comes from them, and they've got a vast database for the state of California, and, and they really monitor the sales tax on daily, on monthly basis. And, and they also keeps, keeps us abreast what's going on the sales tax side. The next, then, so going, going back, so we, we, I'll just go to the total column and I've broken down between the 1920 and 21. 1920, if you look at the sales tax column, is 3.6 that we are going to take a... 1920, if you look at the sales tax column, is 3.6 that we are going to take a cut. And next year, 2021, we are going to take a cut of 4.5 million, bringing about 8.1 million. This quarter, for us, the closure in April and May has costed us a lot. Now June is coming back. Talking to Mr. Schindler yesterday, he was talking to the mall, mall people and said that numbers were very good the last weekend for the, at the mall. And because, that might be because of the pent-up demand and all that. But that's only one weekend so far, so we've got a long ways to go. So the sales tax in total is about a reduction of 8.1 million. This is just the revenue reduction. Councilmember Shabid asked a question last time about the deferrals. It does not take into account deferrals. Deferral is about 2.4 million, but that's only the cash flow for us. And then you go into TOT. TOT, we do about 1.5 million a year for 1920 column. We're showing a reduction of 400,000 and next year, 750,000. One of the industry's biggest hit is the restaurant and the leisure industry, the hotels. So you see a big impact over that. Utility user tax, nobody knows, but, you know, we are just estimating 300,000 for next year. And other is like the permit fees, the planning fees, building fees, admin citation, parking fines and all that. That comes to about 2.5 million, 2.5 million for the next year and 500,000 for the current year. So in total, both years combined is about 12.7 million. I want to stop here for a second if you have any questions.
Okay, so far.
Thank you. Now we'll go into expenditures. These are our expenditures. Police and fire is about 65%, the blue and the red colors. Public works is 7.8, parks and rec is about close to 10 million now. And then CDD, transfers out and general government. This is about 98 million if I remember right. Yeah, I'm correct. Now we're going, if you look at 1920 budget, this 100 million, this year is 2021 is 98. But if I take the anomaly out, last year's budget is about 94, this year is 98, an increase of $4 million. And that $4 million really is personnel. It is a salary which is our MOU, bargaining units that we have to meet our obligation, PERS, overtime, minimum manning and all that comes to about $4 million. And that is because the difference. Now if you go line item, general government is up 1 million. Of the 1 million, 500,000 is the next elections coming up in November, that the county is going to charge us to conduct the election is about 500,000. Police is 2.4 million. Every year, we used to get money from asset forfeiture, that well has dried up. We used to get about 600 to 700,000. So general fund has to absorb that amount in police, for the police department. So it's about 2.4. Fire department went up 1.8 billion. It's just, I guess, that's how the numbers are trending right now for the fire department between overtime and minimum manning. Me and Fire Chief have been talking about this and we are trying to see how we can maintain those numbers a little bit lower. Public works, as I said earlier, on the revenue side, that we get money from the gas tax, transfer from gas tax because public works, does gas tax work in the general fund and that's where the number is a little bit higher. Parks and rec remains the same because of the COVID-19, some of the programs have been frozen and all that. CDD, last year, Mr. Schindler had about a million, $1,250,000 in general plan update. This year, he's only using 250,000, so that million dollars frees up and thereabout. And he also got a couple of positions that he has frozen. Transfer out, last year, when I say last year, which is pretty much current year, 1920, we had 6 billion transferred out from general fund to CIP for Measure S, 1 million to Space Center. And that is, and this year, we don't have the transfer to, for Measure S and also for those, Space Center is only half a million. So that's the difference of 6.8. But overall, it's, if I were to put it in a nutshell, it's our salary cost, the 4 million. Number, you know, varies between the departments and all that, but overall, that's what it Now, I just want to bring to your attention the PERS rates. If you look at the middle part, miscellaneous and public safety, now this year for miscellaneous, we are paying 38%. For public safety, we are paying 56% and that number keeps on increasing. If you look 25, 26, miscellaneous is 42.5% and public safety is 67.1%. We are funded, public safety is funded at 66.5% and miscellaneous is funding at 68.4%. Most of the California cities is around 70 to 72%. We are pretty much up there. This number changes every year, but that's where we are. And this is a city's contribution for employee portion, but the other portion is employee pays that. For miscellaneous, most of the time, I mean, the employee's contribution is about 3%. This is just by numbers. And this is a linear graph. 2021 is 63 million. We go up to 71 million over a period of five years. But the city has done a lot to keep this number low since the 2010 recession. We were like self-funded in health insurance. And then 1011, I think the city went with a structured form of insurance with CalPERS and get the self-funded out, self-funded out, and I think city sold a million dollars. City introduced a second tier in the retirement system with lower benefits to the new employees coming in the city. Governor Brown came with a new law for PAPRA. So there are many, many things that happened and that kept the number low. We had attrition and reduction in staff in 1011. And I don't think we have filled those, in miscellaneous part, we have filled those positions again. In public safety, we did hire some officers and in fire, we did hire some through the Measure S.
Aneel, can I just stop you for a second? Because I want to spend just a second here. And Aneel kind of said, well, there was attrition, that it's more than attrition. It was a planned systematic approach in terms of how we keep our labor cost in check. We learned our lessons from the Great Recession. We took a look at this and said, you know, we don't want to get back to where we were at. We want to make sure that we're in a position to serve the community in a proper way and do it in an efficient way as well. And Aneel's talking a lot about numbers. We don't make things, folks. We're in the business of personnel. That's where we spend our money. So you're always going to see those increases in those areas. But the reason that this chart is up there, I wanted to point out to you, these are the 10 cities that we compare ourselves in terms of similar size, you know, similar full-service cities. If you look at where you are in terms of per thousand residents, so full-time employees per thousand residents, so Santa Monica has 2,000, basically they have 2,142 folks there. And so that means 23 positions per thousand residents. Downey has 3.81, you know, less than four positions per thousand compared to Santa Monica or Burbank, for that matter, even Montebello. So we have really stayed lean in terms of how we approach this. And that's what's kept us in the position to present to you a balanced budget is making sure that we, we've learned the lessons from the past and we continue to monitor that and we do that on a consistent basis. As I said this to you before, we don't wait for a pandemic, we don't wait for a recession. We're always looking for ways to save money and to make the organization more efficient. I always say, what gets measured gets done. And so we've always done that. And so, and that's a testament to all the department heads and quite frankly, the council mandating that we keep our financial house in order. And we've had the highest bond rating the city's ever had because of the efforts that we had. And Aneel's been great at getting the professional awards that we get every year for our fiscal management in terms of transparency. And all of this is really based on the council's philosophy of doing things in an ethical manner, right? Ethics has to guide your financial contributions in terms of what you do for the community. So this is very telling in terms of how we compare to the rest of the city. The only reason that we're lower than, we're not the lowest is West Covina is really, really in trouble right now in terms of whether or fiscally. So otherwise, we would be number 10 out of 10, so.
Thank you, City Manager. That's pretty much my presentation. And like I already said, our budget is based on council-led of debt priorities, fiscal responsibility, economic vibrancy, efficiencies and adaptability, quality of life, public information and engagement.
So I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So you talked about the idea of, you know, forward thinking, forecasting and so forth. And we've always had this conversation about building our bench. You know, we're fortunate that, you know, with the police department, the fire department and with a lot of our different departments, we've been able to groom from within and grow our own. A lot of police officers came from Downey High School and Mayor came from Downey High School. We have a lot of those people fortunate enough to serve in our community. So last year, we brought a guy upstairs, Aldo, we brought a guy up through the idea of a temporary situation. Do we know what, I mean, we know kind of what's going to happen at this point?
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up because actually if our executive team, probably within the next two to three years, probably, you know, 75% of them are going to move on and retire. So we're always looking at sort of bringing somebody on board. And you're talking about building a bench. I actually was in that position and was fortunate to be brought up and be ready, quite frankly, and given the mentorship in order to be ready. So Aldo is there on a temporary basis, but I would certainly, you know, at some point would like to be able to make that a permanent, because we want to do the next couple of years is start training. I know Mr. Oskwe is also, you know, looking at moving on. And so we want to, I want him to be able to also mentor Aldo and, or whoever it is that, you know, going to be bringing up the organization. We've got some really talented folks. We've got Jason here sitting in the audience as well and sort of sitting in the wings. So we've got some talent here and we want to make sure that we bring them along. And that's something that we've done very successfully in Downey. So we want to see that continues to happen. But yes, I certainly want to do that, yes.
Yeah, I bring that up because I think it's, now that we're forecasting for next year and what to expect or what not to expect, I think it's important that we kind of, you know, put our stake in the ground and say, okay, how do we do that? What's the right approach? Is it, do we, I don't know how we do that. Do we make a motion? Do we discuss it? Is it just your decision? I don't know.
Certainly if the council, if it's the council's pleasure to, just to make that as a permanent thing, Aneel can go ahead and make, it's a minor change, just meaning going from a temporary to a permanent, and that's the only difference. So this is certainly, if you give me direction to do that, we can do that.
Yeah. Madam Mayor.
Is there any further discussion as to this item? Okay.
Are there, just to be clear, are there any other positions that are being created or as in this year's budget?
There are no positions that have been added to budget. There is one reclass in my department from accounting coordinator to purchasing coordinator at the same salary, just to show the function of the work that person is doing, but that's about it.
And same as Measure S, we didn't, other than the police officers.
Right, yeah.
Didn't create any positions.
Absolutely zero.
We have frozen everything. We've kept everything status quo. And quite frankly, since we're limiting the amount of activities, there's some positions that we don't need. So some people are doing double duty and picking up extra responsibilities and we're doing that now. And again, we're always very, you know, we add. So that, so to answer your question, Councilmember Shab, there are no other positions in that regard.
If I can add to what the City Manager just said, we've got six positions that we are not hiring this year.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Aneel. Thank you.
In closing, I just want to say thank you to Councilmember Shab for all these years for, on the budget subcommitting, your leadership.
Thank you.
And supporting the finance department. I know this is your last budget.
No, we appreciate you. You've done a phenomenal job.
Hopefully mine lasts too.
Hold on, hold on.
You've done a great job over the years and especially this year. We all know how difficult it's been and we're very fortunate to have you and your whole department, so thank you.
Yes, I agree. Thank you very much. Great job. I will now open this item for public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the City Council regarding the public hearing item may now call our teleconference line at 562-299-6622. For those who submitted comments via email, your comments will be read into the record and no further public comment via teleconference will be permitted. City Clerk Duarte, do we have any speakers on the phone? Not yet. Thank you.
Yes, Mayor, we do have one call that's coming.
Okay.
Hello, please state your name and begin speaking.
Herman, bitches, B-I-T-C-H-E-S. The budget, B-U-D-G-E-T, reflects how niggers still are money. Four million in salaries expenditures. And yet asking that transfer of Measure S never fulfilled our four parks. So fuck Jose Huisar, H-U-I-Z-A-R. Thank you FBI, investigate the fat bitches. Am I still on? Has the coronavirus gotten to you, Miss Prometa?
Herman, stay on topic.
Yeah, the topic's about the budget. The topic's about the budget. All fat bitches want to put their hands into the pocket money of the taxpayers. Pay to play, scheming! Thank you FBI, you have another job to do. Yeah, using COVID as an excuse to expedite money from the general public to spend on your fat vacations and your feeding appetite, you fat bitches. Pay the rent!
Thank you, Mr. Herman.
Thank you.
We have another call, Mayor. Hello, please state your name and begin speaking.
Hi, my name is Alex. I'm here to make a public comment about the city's budget. As someone mentioned earlier today, that the city's budget is a moral document of what we feel we value as a city in investing in our social services. And some things that I think we can do better as a city is calling for more investment in social services as opposed to investing in our continued increased funding for the Downey Police Department. I think, I know that we're interested in hiring some more police officers this year, but what I think we can do with that budget, instead of doing that, we can put that towards, maybe we can have mental health counselors in our school system right now. Maybe we can then have social services at our can then have social services at our schools right now to help families that are struggling with, especially due to financial cases due to COVID, having stressful family backgrounds. I think that would be a greater use of our budget and a better way to make sure that our community as a whole is cared for. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Those are all the calls, Mayor.
Okay, do we have, did we receive any written correspondence to be read into the record?
We did not, Mayor.
Okay, members of the audience who wish to address the Council regarding this matter may now come forward and form a line while maintaining social distancing.
So good evening. I'd like to make a comment about some of the amounts that I see here. I think it's pretty sad, and it's not entirely under your control, but for example, the Community Development Block Grant that you're receiving from the federal government, it's in the amount of $2,259,000. So, you know, cities, it's very sad to come to these kind of budget hearings. And essentially, cities don't have enough money, right? Of course they don't, because they don't have money printing power. So I brought this up many times to you, and I'm especially going to bring it up now, Mayor, because we actually just had, you know, your political opponent speak. I agree with her perspective that we do need more social spending, so, which could be done with more Community Development Block Grants. So this is your opportunity, Mayor, to do what many members of the public, myself included, have asked you to do in the past. Go call up our Congresswoman, Lucille Roigal, who sits on the Appropriations Committee. So for any, in case anyone doesn't know, the Appropriations Committee is where they decide how much money they're going to print. They have, they pass an appropriations bill, and then they decide, okay, here we go again with $800 billion for the US military, or, you know, $100 million for education. So in the same way, they could say, we're going to double, we're going to triple the amount of money that we put into the Community Development Block Grants. You could go to Mrs. Roigal Allard or to any of the other congresspeople, especially because you just said, Mayor, that you're very interested in, you know, representing us for, you know, there's all these bills that are going on. I'm thinking you were meant to the state legislature. Well, yeah, there's some bills that are there that are very important. There's also at the national level. So it's, but it's very important for you to, Ms. Mayor, and, you know, take this position. Don't, you know, if you're going to be competing with Ms. Alice Contreras, take an economically wise position. Talk about how our Congresswoman could deliver us more money appropriations. Everyone should go read the Constitution and go read about the magic money printing power of the US government. They do it all the time for the corporations, right? Billions, trillions, every other morning. Why in the world can we not get it here? And why are you rolling your eyes, Mayor? I'm truly trying to help you out because I'm trying to help out the community. So it's time for you to go advocate for more appropriation spending, the creation of money for Community Development Block Grants. That would help us with rent relief and anti-poverty programs, programs for youth. I know you're broadly on that side, so it's time to demand that. You should not be satisfied with $2 million. It's simply not enough, as you know. So it's time to stand up to those higher positions and demand that they do better. It's not so hard. Thanks.
Hi, can you please state your name for the record?
Yeah, the name is Ralph Dulak. Hope you can hear me okay with the mask on.
Yes.
Okay. Couple items here. So we have in Downey what's known as an exclusive franchise. You know, members of the council, do you know what any of that means? And nobody's speaking.
We have to allow you to speak, sorry.
What's that?
We have to allow you to speak.
Okay, well, I, you know, can throw a question at you occasionally, too. You know, I'm testing your ability as the council here. Do you, any of you, can any of you define an exclusive franchise? Anyway, what it is, it's a fancy name for, Alex knows, it's a fancy name for a monopoly, which we have here in the city of Downey. It's called our, commonly known as our trash company. Okay, now we see our pillars here. Fairness, that's not fair. That means you don't care about anything. You don't care about the citizenship. I don't trust a monopoly, and that's not respectful, and it's not responsible. Now, you go into a former well-known economist, I believe his name was Friedman, who said, when you have a monopoly, you have very poor service and very high prices. Okay, just one thing to think about there. So we need to look into letting other trash companies come in here and bid. Okay, now, let's see. Back to other, other items. As I brought up before, the city of Downey disrespects our constitution by allowing the vehicle code section, which is under administrative hearing. I call it a section out of the Russian Vehicle Code, where the defendant in the case can go to a hearing, and it's not before anybody that's competent, and the officer involved does not have to show up. That denies your constitutional rights. Okay, another thing, thing I want to bring up is that the budget that they're also scared about and worried about and has cuts in it, once again, I brought up with the council, and I never get an answer, is if the city of Downey would consider allowing a card club, a poker club, to come to the city. It would bring millions and millions to the city of Downey. So like I said, they, they don't care about the constitution. They have a monopoly for a trash company. They don't care about the homeless camps. So how in the world could a card club that brings thousands of jobs to the city of Downey have any kind of harm to the city of Downey? Any comments from the council?
We can't respond.
Okay, well, thank you very much then. All right.
Thank you, sir. You may come forward. Please state your name as well.
Absolutely. Hi, my name's Nelson. Well, it's been a pretty crazy month and crazy year, I would say. That said, over the time of this past few weeks, I would say, I've been volunteering with Project Room Key, which is, due to COVID-19, a lot of the hotels have been shut down, basically. Shut to the distancing, all that jazz, you know? So Project Room Key is basically where we house the homeless in hotels that are vacant. I've been volunteering at Van Nuys. I recommend that we do something like that for the homeless population, especially with the crazy weather that we're going to be getting soon. It was 100 degrees this past Saturday in Siberia, record high. So it's going to be pretty bad out there for the homeless, I would say. So I was hoping, instead of using the money from the police budget, perhaps, I don't know, transfer some to public services, like that lady on the call set. I didn't even catch the name. I'm bad with names. So just a thought. So yeah, I mean, aside from that, we've got the resources. I think we should use it. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any further speakers? Please state your name for the record, please.
Yeah, I'm Joey from the city of Downey. I find it disturbing that not only are we engaged in frivolous lawsuits that are damaging us fiscally, but that this idea that we need to open businesses without a plan, as we see, as you guys here are admitting that numbers are going up, is going to put us in a potential situation where we're going to see a larger second wave, and businesses and communities are going to have to go into a deeper quarantine. It's weird. It's weird because you guys are showing us the numbers of how Downey has fallen so low, and you guys are the ones who are responsible for that. But then you guys want to give yourself a pat on the back and saying that you're going to do better. In other jobs, in other places, when you fail the community, or when you're not doing your job properly, you're replaced. And obviously, there is a candidate running against you, Mayor. But also, we've been asking for you to not only replace the assistant manager, but you should be replacing the manager as well, because he's done very poorly. So if you guys are not going to take responsibility, you should, you guys should consider not participating anymore. And I will want this question answered. What happened with the Measure S money? Why did you guys make promises you could not keep? Why all of a sudden are we finding ourselves in this situation? So please, explain to the community what is going on. Why did Measure S fail to provide the promises that you guys claimed that it was going to do? Please answer.
Thank you, Joey. And hopefully, you're wearing your facial covering and social distancing, so that way we can keep those numbers down, because we all have to do our part to keep those numbers down, which is something that we are experiencing throughout the state, an increase in numbers. So hopefully, we all do our part. We all maintain social distancing. We are, we all wear our facial coverings, because like Joey mentioned, our numbers are going up, but the only way we can alleviate that problem is by each and every one of us doing what we need to do. So thank you. That was a good point to bring up. And
Move to close for the comment.
All right. Thank you.
I move to approve the budget.
Is there a second? Second. Can we take a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Ashton?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Sob?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Prometa?
Yes.
And Mayor Pacheco?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everyone. And great job. Thank you. Our next item is to adopt a resolution adjusting city user fees. Adopt a resolution of the City Council of the city of Downey, adjusting the city's uniform schedule of fees. The hour having arrived, a public hearing is now open. City Clerk Duarte, do we have proof of publication?
Yes, Mayor.
Can I have a motion and a second to receive and file? Second. So ordered by the mayor. City Manager Levas, is there a staff report?
Madam Mayor, yes. Assistant to the City Manager, Vanya, will go ahead and give us a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Levas. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Last year, during the budget adoption process, the City Council approved an automated annual adjustment to the city user fee schedule based on the Consumer Price Index, CPI, for the Los Angeles Orange Riverside, I'm sorry, metropolitan statistical area. On the attached exhibit A of your report, the proposed city user fee schedule includes that adjustment for the upcoming proposed user fee schedule. The CPI comes from March 19 through March 2020, and it's at 1.9% for the statistical area. As previously noticed, as when this was adopted, the CPI is only applied to user fees that have not reached 100% cost recovery. Additionally, when these, the 1.9% was attached to, applied to the fees and the user fee schedule. For simplicity, for employees and patrons, the fees that were rounded up or down, fees were rounded up or down to the nearest whole number. And this was based if there was greater than 50 cents or lower than 50 cents, is how the rounding up worked. There is one noted exemption, and this is in the Community Development Department and the Building and Safety Division. The fees here are historically charged at full cost recovery, including the cents. I also wanted to note that in addition to the CPI changes, there was an additional fee added to the Public Works Department Engineering Division. This was the wireless facility supplemental fee. So the City Council adopted a wireless facilities in the right-of-way ordinance on April 9, 2019, to enforce aesthetic standards and pertaining to wireless facilities located within the city's public right-of-way. The new wireless facility supplemental fee accounts for the staff time in reviewing for these wireless facilities designs and the issuance of these permits. So the fee that's being proposed is set at 100% cost recovery. And that concludes staff report, and staff and the department heads are available to answer any questions you have regarding these fees.
Are there any questions? Seeing none. I will now open this item for public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the City Council regarding the public hearing item may now call our teleconference line at 562-299-6622. For those who submit comments via email, your comments will be read into the record, and no further public comment via teleconference will be permitted. City Clerk Duarte, do we have a speaker on the phone?
We do, Mayor. Hello, please state your name and begin speaking.
N-I-double-G-E-R. My name is N-I-G-G-E-R. Negro. CPI. Yeah, that 1.9% reflects like that of the rapper 50 Cent. You either go up, or you go down with wireless. And wireless will get you all tied up on a right-of-way with user fees. The same fucking fees you add to us when we're buying our fucking Edison bills, too. Yeah. Yeah, CPI. CPI. Can't participate in the interest of user fees. CPI. Can't play. The same reason Jose Huisar made the news this morning, that fucking jackass got arrested. FBI, be careful of our user fees. Monitor these calls. Let's do an internal investigation on wireless. This way, the right-of-ways will be safe in the near future for our future children, if there are any left when China comes and takes our fucking billionaire land development away. Thank you, you fucking criminals. You're nothing but thieves. Now put your mask on and suck it through a straw.
Any other callers?
No, Mayor.
No. Do we have, have we received any written correspondence to be read into the record?
We did not, Mayor.
Members of the audience who wish to address the Council regarding this matter may now come forward and form a line while maintaining social distancing.
Okay, let's go over this again, because it's really important. There are too many fees in the city of Downey and in other cities. And again, that's because you don't have the money printing capacity. However, again, remember when we used to build military planes here? Where did that money come from? Did it come from taxes? No, they printed it into existence. It's time, Ms. Langa Pacheco, call up Lucille Roigal, and say, there should not be a $31 entry fee for anyone that wants to start a business. That's just one example. No. You know, in the same way that children can go to school now for free, that didn't always used to be the case, right? We had to really push previous governments for that. You need to advocate so that there is less fees for the public, so that there's more opportunities and people have less barriers to success. It's not so difficult. Again, get on the phone and tell her to use her position on the Appropriations Committee to lobby for more money for opportunities like this. Of course, it could come in the form of a grant that you could then allocate, so that people don't have this extra burden. We already, we know people barely have a few bucks in their pockets. It's time to lower the barriers for economic success. Do it by calling, pushing for more appropriation spending. Spend the money into existence. Thanks, Ms. Langa Pacheco.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none. Is there a motion to close public comment? Second, second. City Clerk Duarte, can we take a roll call vote, please?
Make a motion?
Yeah.
Make a motion.
Second. Sorry. Thank you.
Councilmember Ashton?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Saab?
Yes.
Councilmember Frometa?
Yes.
And Mayor Pacheco?
Yes.
Uh, the motion is approved unanimously.
The next item, adopt mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the Paramount Boulevard and Imperial Highway Intersection Improvements, Capital Improvement Project Number 19-06. Adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Downey adopting the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the Paramount Boulevard and Imperial Highway Intersection Improvement Project in accordance with the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act. The hour having arrived, the public hearing is now open. City Clerk Duarte, do we have proof of publication?
Yes, Mayor.
Can I have a motion, a second to receive and file?
Second.
So ordered by the mayor. City Manager Levas, is there a staff report?
Madam Mayor, there is a staff report. I, I wasn't sure during the discussion from the, the public, the public comment, is there anything that you, the council wanted me to respond to on any of those items?
Actually, I did want, I wanted to mention, to ask if you could mention something about any mental health providers that are working with our police department in case the public wants to know about that?
Yeah, actually, we, we do have mental health providers that do work with our police department currently, not just our police department, but our city manager's office and others in order to make sure that that particular population is served. I know that also there was a discussion about what happened to Measure S. We've had two fire stations constructed. Golden Park has been completed. Apollo Park has been completed. Independent Park has been completed. The library is under construction. Furman Park will open just shortly after 4th of July. Wilderness Park is under construction. So, all the promises that were kept.
Theater.
And the theater, the civic center. Um, so all of those.
And police officers.
Yeah, all of those items have gone through. So the Measure S money was spent in accordance with what the residents had wanted to spend the money on, so. And it's actually been done without one additional personnel added to the budget. So, um, you're talking about roughly a $60 million, $66 million infrastructure project that was done without any additional personnel. Much of the credit goes to Mr. Oskwe, who handled all that construction. So those are all public services, community services for the residents and the youth in, in town, so.
And on budget?
And it's on budget, so we're, we're moving right along. And so, um, we're, we're proud to say that what the community voted for is being done. So, so that's the other thing. As far as the block grant money, we absolutely love to, to get more block grant money. We actually do lobby our congressional representatives for, for money every year. And we, anytime we can get help in that, we certainly want to get more money into the city, so. But we do that consistently, year in and year out, so. Those are just a, a couple of things that I wanted to, to point out in terms of what we're doing with Measure S money, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And the staff report will be...
The staff report will be presented by Delphino Consuji, our Public Works Director.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Levas. Um, good evening, Mayor Pacheco. Council, um, one of the priority projects in the city's CIP is the Paramount Boulevard at Imperial Highway Intersection Improvements. This project will construct capacity enhancements and infrastructure improvements to accommodate the projected 18% increase in traffic volumes by year 2035. More specifically, the proposed improvements, which are shown in yellow on the area, includes widening of the intersection to provide dual left-turn lanes in the southbound and westbound directions. So if you refer to the map, this is Paramount Boulevard, which goes north-south, and this is Imperial Highway, which is in the east-west direction. You can see that there are existing dual left-turn lanes in the northbound and in the eastbound direction already. However, there is only one existing left-turn lane in the southbound and in the westbound directions. This project will add a second left-turn lane, which is now showing these two yellow left-turn lanes, for both the southbound and the westbound directions. This project will also reconstruct the intersection, which is this whole intersection area, plus the approach lanes and the departure lanes for all legs with concrete pavement. This will allow the intersection to handle the additional heavy truckloads over the next 10 to 15 years. We will also construct ADA improvements, including curb access ramps at the intersection corners. We will modify the existing traffic signals to accommodate the widening, and there will be some striping and signing modifications to as part of this project.
What, the striping and modification, is this going to be run-of-the-mill simple? Or can we make it a little more creative?
So, part of the striping modifications will all be per the standard MUTCD Caltrans standards. However, part of this project will be installing decorative crosswalks. So all these crosswalks will be decorative, concrete.
Decorative and what form, colored concrete? You're talking about screed lines? What are we talking about?
Um, right now, I don't think we have decided yet. The, the plans are in 60% design, but we can definitely look at pavers or stamped concrete, whatever.
I think, you know, that's probably one of our busiest intersections in the city, so if we can, you know, just maybe put a little effort, just a little bit more, you know, creativity on, on, on just doing something a little bit more creative, I guess you could say.
Yeah.
I'm probably not saying the right words, but.
Yeah.
I guess what I'm, what I'm trying to say is not to just make it the, the run-of-the-mill, you know. I like to make it, you know, something a little bit, because we're only going to do this once every, you know, you know, several, every couple decades, so. And given it's such an important corner, if we can do something real, real nice and real decorative, I don't, I don't know what that means, I'm not the creative one here, but, but, especially the crosswalk and...
Yeah, we can certainly look at that. Yeah, normally, when we put in decorative concrete, it would be more like decorative pavers with different colors. But yeah, we can certainly look at that and incorporate that in the design too.
Great, thank you.
The total estimated cost of the project, including environmental, design, right-of-way acquisition, and construction, is $3.2 million. Funding will come from the I-710 EIR Early Action Program Grant Funds. This is the same pot of money that Metro presented at the last council meeting.
It will be 100% from that money?
Um, right now, we're looking at 100% grant-funded. In order to address the environmental impacts associated with this project, an initial study was prepared in accordance with CEQA. The initial study evaluated several environmental categories. I'm not going to go through all of them, but they included air quality, biological, cultural resources, water quality, noise, and so forth. Based on the technical studies conducted, the project was determined to have less than significant impacts with mitigation measures incorporated. A notice of intent to adopt a mitigated negative declaration, or MND, was prepared in April 2020 and was sent to all the appropriate governmental agencies and applicable organizations. As part of the MND document, a mitigation monitoring and reporting program was prepared and included mitigation measures that will have to be implemented during construction. The mitigation measures are as follows. One, fugitive dust control. Measures include watering all exposed soil surfaces two to three times a day, covering all material stockpiles with tarp at the end of each workday, covering all trucks hauling dirt, sand, or loose materials, maintaining a freeboard of two feet, and sweeping all the streets on a daily basis. Two, emissions control. Measures include utilizing well-tooned construction equipment and enforcing five-minute idling limits at the job site at all times. Three, hazardous material storage. Measures include storing hazmat on-site in appropriate containers, storing hazmat, fuels, and oils at least 150 feet away from any drainage structure or water supply, and containing and cleaning up spills immediately after discovery. Four, water quality. Because the proposed improvements will disturb more than one acre of soil, the Los Angeles Regional Water Quality Control Board requires that the project implement a Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, or SWPEE, and a Water Quality Management Plan, or WQMP. And lastly, number five, noise control. In accordance with the city's noise ordinance, all construction activities shall be limited between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m., Mondays through Saturdays, and all construction equipment shall use properly operating mufflers. The 20-day review period ended on May 18, 2020. No comments were received from the public or any governmental agencies during the, the public comment period. However, letters were received from Caltrans and California Department of Fish and Wildlife after the comment period ended. Neither of the two letters received contained any significant comments. In conclusion, staff is recommending that council adopt a resolution adopting the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program for this project. That concludes my report. Public Works Staff and the environmental consultant are available to answer questions at this time.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions, comments?
Good report. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
I will now open this item for public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the City Council regarding this public hearing item may now call our teleconference line at 562-299-6622. For those who submitted comments via email, your comments will be read into the record, and no further public comment via teleconference will be permitted. City Clerk Duarte, do we have any speakers on the phone?
Yes, Mayor, we do.
Hello, please state your name and begin speaking.
Hi, this is Alex. Uh, I'm calling in about the improvement, and I'm actually not happy with the improvement. I live off of Imperial Highway, and I bike pretty frequently across the city. And it's not an improvement if you don't make space for all members of the public to move through the city safely. Uh, and that includes protected bike lanes. With climate crisis literally at our doorstep and traffic exhaust has proven to be a negative factor in COVID, in COVID cases and COVID patients. And growing up near the 5 freeway myself, we need to do our best to help the citizens, like the people who live here in Downey, to be able to move safely through the streets while making sure we reduce our vehicle miles traveled. What the city needs to do is make sure that there's safe places for cyclists like myself to be able to move through, so that way we continue moving through the city without increasing our carbon footprint. It's a simple change that the city can do that can encourage healthy lifestyle living. It can also help people bring out, get them outside, especially during cases right now when COVID, when everyone's feeling shut-in, this is a safe way to get outside, get your exercise, and still practice social distancing. But if there's no urban infrastructure to allow the people to do that, they're not going to do it. So I would really want the city to then make sure that there are, if we're going to be considering this, to install permanent protected bike lanes for that way people can get through safely and securely. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers?
Yes, Mayor. Hello, please state your name and begin speaking. Please state your name and begin speaking.
The lady's speaking still. There's a lady speaking.
Your time is running. Please go ahead and begin speaking.
My name is N-I-G-G-E-R. You, you call me nigger. Nigger wants to be heard, but I now see my name on the, on the icon as it reads out. It's me, N-I-G-G-E-R. Nigger, nigger. I'm trying. What do you mean my time's running? You, you got, you got systemic ADA issues here, bitches. You gotta modify the ADA. Paramount and Imperial for 3.2 million? Yeah, look at the infrastructure projects you left behind under Measure S. You got all our fucking community full of dirt. As far as I'm concerned, you spread COVID. Fuck Jose Weza. Fuck Jackie Lacy. And fuck the City Attorney of Los Angeles, Mike Fears' office. You fucking racist bastards on signage for ADA. Modify. And that fucking bitch, Roybo Allard, she's such a lying piece of shit. She doesn't like people with systemic ADA issues. That's why she banned me from the Citadel, that fucking old cunt. You're nothing but tyrants.
Are there any, any other speakers on the phone?
No, Mayor.
Did we receive any written correspondence to be read into the record?
We did not, Mayor.
Members of the audience who wish to address the Council regarding this item may now come forward and form a line while maintaining social distancing.
So, uh, it's funny that every time Alex, you know, speaks on the phone, you can't help but to look, you know? At least you're taking your opponent seriously. That's good. In regards to the noise ordinance, I'll be brief.
You were talking about Alex Saab. Sorry.
I'm talking about your opponent. You know who she is. But anyways, in regards to the noise ordinance, you guys want to come up and make excuses and use dilemmas that we have in our city to seek, seek opportunities to subvert our First Amendment? I mean, I'm pretty sure nobody's going to come out and blatantly say that that's what your aim is, but...
I'm sorry, you have to be on topic on this agenda item.
Is this noise ordinance? Was that not up there?
No.
All right. I'll be back then.
Next item is adopt resolution confirming lighting and landscaping assisted.
Hold on.
I'm sorry.
Move to close public comment.
I'm jumping ahead.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the, uh, item number three.
Second.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you, Sean. Uh, can we take a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Ashton?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Saab?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Frometa?
Yes.
And Mayor Pacheco?
Yes.
The motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Saab. I was jumping ahead.
Good catch.
Next up is adopt resolution confirming lighting and landscaping assessment district AD 121 for fiscal year 2020, 2021. Adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Downey confirming lighting and landscaping assessment district 121 for fiscal year 2020, 2021. The hour fi, having arrived, the public hearing is now open. City Clerk Duarte, do we have proof of publication?
Yes, Mayor.
Can I have a motion and a second to receive and file?
Second.
So ordered by the mayor. City Manager Levas, is there a staff report?
Madam Mayor, there is a staff report. Delphino's up for number two.
Mr. City Manager, you know, the report is very thorough. I don't know, unless the other council members care to hear the whole thing. I'm, I'm, I'm okay with...
I'm with the summary of it.
Yeah.
In the spirit of moving along, let's do it.
Well, the report, it's...
Yeah, absolutely.
It is very thorough. I read it.
Not that we don't like to hear your voice.
You do good work, Delfino. Very good work.
Could I just make one recommendation? Have Mr. Sun, could you just give us a summary?
Summary, yeah.
Because it is a public hearing?
Sure.
Just for members of the public. Thank you.
Thank you.
A brief summary would be great.
By the way, the report was written by Ed Norrie, so...
Maybe we should have him speak.
Mayor Pacheco, members of the city council, the citywide lighting and landscaping assessment district was established pursuant to the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972. Assessments are collected and used to fund maintenance and operations of approximately 6,600 streetlights, 115 traffic signals, and 20,000 trees in the city. The district is comprised of seven zones. Zones 1 to 6 provide funding for maintenance of traffic signals and streetlights. Zone L provides funding for tree maintenance, including trimming, removals, and planting of new trees. The 1972 Act specifies the procedures for renewing assessments within a maintenance district. The process consists of three steps. The first step was completed in April with council adopting a resolution ordering the preparation of the engineer's report. The second step was completed on June 9th with council's approval of the engineer's report and proposed assessments. The item before you tonight is the last step in the renewal process, which is to conduct a public hearing and for final approval of the assessment levy. The total operating budget for fiscal year 2021 is approximately $1.8 million, which is 9% less than last year's budget. Total revenues, including assessments, general property taxes, and interest is $2.3 million. Projected balance at the end of fiscal year 2021 is $490,000. Staff is not proposing any rate increases to any of the zones at this time. Currently, the assessment rates for zones 2, 3, 6, and L are at the maximum levels already. Increasing costs for maintenance of traffic signals, streetlights, and tree trimming have resulted in negative fund balances over the last few years. To cover the shortfall in funding, the district has been subsidized by General Fund. However, in order for the district to operate in a self-sustaining manner, the assessment rates for zones 3, 6, and L may have to be increased through a Prop 218 ballot. Again, the final step is to conduct the public hearing. Upon conclusion of the public hearing, council shall adopt a resolution confirming the assessment levy as proposed or modified by council. That concludes the report. I'm available to answer questions.
Thank you. Very good report.
Do any members of the council have questions?
No, ma'am. Very clear.
Okay, now we'll now open this item for public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the city council regarding the public hearing item may now call our teleconference line at 562-299-6622. For those who submitted comments via email, your comments will be read into the record, and no further public comment via teleconference will be permitted. City Clerk Duarte, do we have any speakers?
Mayor, we have no people calling on the teleconference line.
Did we receive any written correspondence to be read into the record?
We did not, Mayor.
Members of the audience who wish to address the council regarding this matter may now come forward and form a line while maintaining social distancing. Seeing none, I will now entertain a motion and a second to close the public hearing. So ordered by the mayor, is there a motion and a second?
Move to adopt.
Second, City Clerk Duarte, can we take a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Ashton?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Sob?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Prometa?
Yes.
And Mayor Pacheco?
Yes.
The motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you. Was that better, guys?
Good job.
Listen to this brief.
Public hearing item number five will not be heard tonight and will be continued to the regular city council meeting of July 14, 2020.
If I may ask the council to take action to formally continue to July 14th?
Okay, is there a motion to continue? Is there a second? Can we take a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Ashton?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Sob?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Prometa?
Yes.
And Mayor Pacheco?
Yes.
The motion is approved unanimously.
Okay, next up, consider and approve an amendment to the 2017-2018 Home Investment Partnerships' grant annual action plan for the use of home funds towards the city's tenant-based rental assistance program for low-to-moderate-income Downey residents that have experienced COVID-19-related economic hardship.
Madam Mayor, I have to excuse myself. I can be a part of this, so...
Okay, thank you. The hour having arrived, the public hearing is now open. City Clerk Duarte, do we have proof of publication?
Yes, Mayor.
Can I have a motion and a second to receive and file?
Second.
So ordered by the mayor. City Manager Levas, is there a staff report?
Madam Mayor, it depends on if you would like a staff report. This particular item was brought to you last week. This is just the second part of that, essentially taking the additional $200,000 and putting into the rental assistance program. So if you'd like, I can have Aldo do a presentation to you, but it's just a continuation of what we did already.
So this would be adding the amount so that we can do a figure of 700,000?
That's correct.
Which is going to go to help the tenants in the community, correct?
That's correct. So this is for the tenants in the community who need rental assistance, so yes.
Can we have Aldo do maybe like a one-minute presentation?
Yeah, just for me, like, I know what the program's about, maybe just a summary, but I'd also like to see if he can give us an update on everything that's happened so far since we started the program.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We serve at your pleasure, so I was...
Take your time, Mr. Sean.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor and council members. To address Councilmember Ashton's request, we do have some updates in terms of where we're at with the program. So the program was launched last Wednesday on June 17th, and so on the first day, we received 190 calls of individuals that were interested. But then it started to decline in terms of the calls. Since then, on the 18th, we received 80 calls. It dropped down to 32 on the 19th, and as of today, close of business, we had 26 calls. So in total, we have 362 applicants that have submitted screening intake forms. So our goal was to get to 500 so that we'd screen down. What we've also found is that the average bedrooms were two bedrooms, one bath, in terms of the unit counts, and the average monthly rent was $1,660 in terms of folks that were being screened.
That's based on the information they provided.
Yes, that was based on the 362 applicants that we've screened initially for that. And so the way our process works is we're going to take those calls and we ask them nine very, very basic questions. Where do you live? What's your room count? What's your income? What's your family size? So that we can get to a point that we can determine at least initially that they're eligible based on their income and those other factors. And then after we reach that 500, we're then going to distribute applications. We're going to distribute them by email, by mail. People can come pick them up, and we're going to provide any assistance that's necessary to fill out those applications. We know that some people aren't going to be eligible, hence the 500 versus what we can actually serve. At an average of $1,600 for monthly rent and the $700,000, we're looking a little over 400 individuals or families that we'll be able to serve with these dollars. And so that's a synopsis of where we're at today. We assess this on a daily basis to see how our numbers are coming in, and if, in fact, we're going to get to that 500, and if not, how we're going to pivot so that we can at least focus on the core individuals that we're going to serve. Are there any questions in regards to that update?
I just, I was going to ask you, Aldo, if, again, the 362 applicants, again, were, the goal was 500, if we're going to extend the deadline or if we're going to have some other push to see if we get additional families to...
Sure, sure. It's open-ended, so we don't have a date deadline.
We don't have a deadline, right?
Pardon?
We have a deadline?
No deadline. No deadline. Yeah, we can go at a snail's pace until we get to 500. You know, we might get numbers that spike up again, or we might just regroup and say, hey, we made it.
Aldo, just a minute. Can we, the speaker's in the back, can you please take your conversation outside? It's disrupting the meeting. Sorry about that.
Sure, no problem. In terms of the process of getting to that 500, once again, it's an imaginary number based on how many people we think we're going to need to get to our core eligible group. And so we know that when people give us information initially, their data may be a little off, so it's not until we dive into an application and start to assess their income and what's happening within their household that we're going to be able to paint a good picture of who's eligible and who's not. But there is no deadline as to how we get to that 500. We just want to make sure that we're able to serve our core that our funding allows us to do so. And so the numbers could spike in the next couple of days in terms of receiving more than 26 calls as we did today. It could decline. If it starts to decline, then once again, we're going to start to assess, you know, our outreach again and also assess, you know, when do we need to button up the program? In terms of our marketing, it's what we mentioned last time I was here. We're doing our social media blitz. You know, we've reached out to the Patriot as well. We reached out personally to all the different property management companies that have a multitude of units within our city. We've sent direct emails to all the, not all, to the property owners that we have email addresses for, and that's 116. Those are property owners that have rental projects, excuse me, properties that we have through our business license database. So once again, we're continuing to do that. We're doing it in English and Spanish. We also are working through our Nextdoor app to get to folks as well. So we'll continue to cycle through that on a daily basis and, once again, assess where we're at in terms of interest on a daily basis as well.
Thank you.
And with that briefly, as the city manager mentioned, so the difference between this program is it's funded by the federal government. At the last council meeting, that aspect of the program is funded by the state of California. The federal government requires that we amend our action plan and conduct a public hearing such as this before we move forward.
If someone doesn't have an email or computer, are they, will we be able to assist them in that respect to fill out the application and make sure that they receive the funds if they're eligible for it?
Most definitely. That's why we went calling versus email or downloading an application on our computer so that we can capture as many people as we can. We can mail people applications, they can pick them up at City Hall, and we're going to be at their beck and call in terms of collecting information and answering any questions that they might have.
Very well, thank you.
And we have the sufficient, I know, I think you've mentioned it before, we do have the sufficient number of staff to handle the phone calls that may be coming in.
Yeah, yes, we do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will now open this item up for public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the city council regarding the public hearing item may now call our teleconference line at 562-299-6622. For those who submitted comments via email, your comments will be read into the record and no further public comment via teleconference will be permitted. City Clerk Duarte, do we have any speakers on the phone?
Mayor, we do not.
City Clerk Duarte, have you received any written correspondence to be read into the record?
We did not, Mayor.
Members of the audience who wish to speak to address the council regarding this matter may now come forward and form a line while maintaining social distancing.
Okay, so, A, I think it's really important to point out that it's a good thing that Downey's taking some action, and it's very important that everyone who's listening at home and everyone who's here should notice that that's because the people have been here. The people have been calling in, the people have showed up here, the people have been advocating for rent forgiveness. Why are you laughing? Just because you have a fancy house? Come on.
Please direct your comments to me.
All right. So I want to dispute these, what your staff member kind of just interpreted in the data that he's seeing. So the mere fact that people are not calling in at an exaggerated tremendous rate does not mean that people are not in need. It does not mean that people even know about the program. You said that you sent the notice to the Downey Patriot, that you sent it to the Downey Latino, which we know is read by a quite large number of people, Spanish-speaking community members who are probably going to be more likely to be affected by inability to pay rent. Have you done that? I don't think so, right? Because you just gave the, you're going to give the Patriot yet one more contract for another year. We'll talk about that. But, you know, it's, come on. We had a caravan, we've had, we're going to have more protests. Are you loving the protests? You know, there used to be just a few people, right? But now it's hundreds of people. And, you know, if you don't cancel the rents, we will. The people will. And that's because we want a people's government. And it's time for, okay, I'm glad that you're taking these initial steps. It's more than the other cities have done, and that's because we've been focusing on Downey. So you're being responsive, that's good, but you're not, you need to do a lot more. You need to cancel the rents. Of course you could. Article 11, Section 7 California State Constitution says that, under a local emergency, which you have declared, Mayor Pacheco, you have declared the local emergency, what are cities empowered to do? They are empowered to do everything they can to safeguard human health. Well, it's not healthy in a pandemic for, to have people out on the street, right? If you're unhoused, it's going to be very difficult for you to take care of yourself. And then what happens then? Well, okay, the virus spreads further and society is afflicted, right? There's someone on the council, right, who is, works for Kaiser and should know about emergency preparedness, right? So it's time to do a lot more. This is good that you're doing this. I hope it passes, but of course we need a lot more. You need to cancel the rents, you need to cancel the mortgages. The people will be on your side, and you'll be, you'll see the people next time we're marching through. So it'll be exciting.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Please state your name for the record.
Yes, hi, my name's Ian Jamison. Just a minor point, Ms. Pacheco. I contacted the First Amendment Coalition several months ago about your demand that public speakers address only you, and they told me what I suspected, which is it's completely against the Brown Act. There's nothing in that act which requires public speakers to only address the mayor. We are entitled to address any member of the city council we please, and every time you make that demand, you're violating state law. Thank you.
It wasn't on the agenda item, but it was short.
I don't care.
Do we have any other speakers?
Oh, there's one more.
Is there a second?
No, I think there's someone coming in.
Is anyone going to wipe this down? Two people have come up here and spoken.
Are you going to, well, we can still clean it.
I won't take too much of your time with this, just so you know. There is a crisis. People are still losing their jobs. Renters need help more than ever now. Your incompetence in watching this city has caused COVID-19 cases to grow exponentially. So with that said, canceling the rents, allocating funds where they need to be appropriated most should be considered. And you guys should reach out to Downey Latino, but not only that, you guys should have a conversation with the tenants union here in the city. There is a tenants union. You guys never bring it up, and you don't talk about it. And to not acknowledge a body that's here calling for your attention to serve our community is to do us a wrong. So if you're not having a dialogue with the tenants union, then you're not doing everything you can. So please make sure you do that. And if you guys begin to do that, then maybe you can begin to say you're sort of doing
Do you want us to clean it for you?
All right, please. Thank you. I'd just like to echo what's been said by the others before me. I would strongly urge canceling the rents, and, you know, please think about the people who are hurting out there, can't, not employed any longer, and who are in a very difficult time making rent payments. So yes, please, please urge you do so. Do so. Please cancel their rents, and just think about the people, people of the city of Downey. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Seeing none, is there a motion to close public comment?
Make a motion.
Is there a second? Before we go on to vote, Madam City Attorney, can you mention anything, any of the comments that were just mentioned about canceling rent? Do we have any authority over that?
Under the federal constitution, there is a provision that says that you, we can't, city, local government, any government on whatever level that is, cannot impair existing contracts. So if there's a lease or rental agreement in place, the landlord is entitled to collect rents. The city can't just adopt an ordinance that cancels the payment of rent that may be owed but hasn't been paid yet. So there's liability to do that. We try to do other things, though. We have other tools. We try to do other things, though, we have other tools, there's some items on the agenda, where we do have some tools to help tenants out in terms of repayment of rents that haven't been able to been paid because of loss of jobs, et cetera. But we can't adopt regulations that impair existing contracts, existing contracts between landlord and tenant, for example. This doctrine applies to a lot of other situations, but in this case, we cannot cancel rents and impair those existing rental agreements. But again, we have other tools, and we're utilizing those, and those are on the agenda as well.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion?
I'm moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
City Clerk Duarte, can I, can we take a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Ashton?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
He's...
Oh, I'm sorry, he's abstaining. Councilmember Sob?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Frometta?
Yes.
And Mayor Pacheco?
Yes.
The motion is approved with Councilmember Rodriguez abstaining.
Thank you. We should probably go get our other council member. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, can you?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now is the time for non-agenda public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the city council regarding non-agenda public comment may now call our teleconference line at (562) 299-6622. For those who submitted comments via email, your comments will be read into the record and no further public comment via teleconference will be permitted. Before we begin the non-agenda public comment period, I would like to remind members of the public participating telephonically that the city's meeting rules contained in the Downey Municipal Code prohibit any conduct that disrupts, disturbs, or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting, even if you are participating telephonically. Each member shall have three minutes to address the council on issues that are within the city's jurisdiction. Since we are under a federal, state, and local emergency declaration, and Los Angeles County's safer at work and in the community order, I will limit the non-agenda public comment period to 30 minutes pursuant to Downey Municipal Code, Section 2105G. City Clerk Duarte, do we have any speakers on the phone?
We do not, Mayor.
And City Clerk Duarte, do we have any written correspondence on non-agenda items to be read into the record?
We do not, Mayor.
Members of the audience who wish to address the council regarding non-agenda items may now come forward and form a line while maintaining social distancing. Welcome. Do you want us to clean, clean it for you?
We cleaned it.
Okay, thank you.
Before I begin, Mr. Rodriguez, trust me, if you think it's tough to breathe in, try having allergies.
Yes, sir.
Just trying to add some humor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This has to do with this issue about what I consider freedom of this country and the protection of life, liberty, and property, and this so-called movement to try to either defund or abolish police departments. Lee Squire, Vietnam veteran, United States Army, member of the American Legion, civil rights advocate for the elderly and those with disabilities. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council and city staff. Subject, Fourth of July, annuity of community leaders. Due to coronavirus, our civil liberties have been impaired, thus caused Memorial Day, May 25th, a public celebration to be canceled across America. What I am asking the city council for this evening is for a show of leadership on July the 4th, for community leaders to come together on behalf of we, the people of the city of Downey, the elected leaders, religious leaders, leaders of all the various veterans groups, and other community leaders. I know that there's a limit of four, but I'm looking for the symbolism of this day, to place a wreath at the war memorial and the police memorial. Both the military and police defend the principles of life, liberty, and property in this country. Thank you very much for your consideration. Good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'd like to talk about the fact that some members of government attempt an assault, and do assault branches of the government. I'm talking about that guy.
I'm sorry, please direct your comments to me.
So, again, for anyone who hasn't been paying attention, what is going on is that private water companies want to do what? Well, what companies do? They want to reap a higher and prior profit from selling us water. So it's just been a long-term goal of theirs. So how do you do that? You know, one of the ways that you do that is you destabilize regulatory agencies. So that's what's going on right now with the Central Basin Municipal Water District, so Downey has a part in that. So the Central Basin serves a very key function. It prevents over-pumping of water, there's water underneath, and if we pump too much of it, well, we might run into problems with, you know, not having enough water, as well as potentially the ground caving, and hardly ever happens, but could happen. So, that's why the basin exists. It was established by the voters in 1952. But now, we have a large-scale conspiracy spearheaded by our assembly member here in Downey, Christina Garcia, and supported by that man who was appointed by, partly by Downey, partly by other private water companies and cities. They, and he has been creating chaos. I cannot believe that you have not yet fired him. Like, aren't you supposed to be the feminist mayor, yet he's assaulting women, that's on tape, and yet you say nothing? What's up with that? Come on, you're supposed to be defending women, right? Maybe that's why we will need to vote for Alex Contreras. So, no, it's time to stand up for the public right to water, which these companies want to violate. These companies are all about hijacking our public water infrastructure. They already did it in Compton. The Tiva Water District was put into, quote, receivership, and now they're being sold off to a private water company. That's the same thing that the private water companies want to do with, well, every element of our water system. And that man is, and that man too, the city manager, they're engaging in a conspiracy to, to defraud us of an election. There was an election that was scheduled, is scheduled, as of right now, to take place in November for the Water Board. However, that man, and you, and you, and you, and you are trying to stop that. You're trying to disenfranchise the voters, the poor, overwhelmingly working-class Latino, black communities of southeast Los Angeles. It's outrageous that you're doing it, it's outrageous that you're getting contracts from Rick Olivares, it's outrageous that you're related to the lawyers that are doing this to our communities, it's time to stand up for our water.
Thank you.
Hello. Um, back in, I'm here to speak on SB 625. Back in April, or maybe it was May, Claudia Formetta made a comment here saying that there's no discussion here for the Water Board. We will not be speaking about water here. She addressed that before the public was allowed to be present. Well, I'm here to say differently. I'm here to address the people and speak on SB 625, address the public. Why was this bill created in the first place? The public needs to know that this is an attempt to make and dissolve the central water basin. The people need to know that this will affect 2.5 million people. The people need to know, three people were appointed to a governing board, not elected. Two of them here today, I guess. This is an attempt to appear and make the Water Board look dysfunctional, making it appear chaotic, and therefore disbanding it. It's a shame during a pandemic, it's just business as usual. We, the people, will collectively do everything in our power to stop this bill. I'm here to speak again to the people because a lot of them do not even know that this is existing. It's SB 625. Our water is not for sale. Kill Bill 625. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, that's okay. Hi, my name's Ian Jamison. I'd just like to go over the basics of SB 625, the boring nuts and bolts with, which I'm sure you're all familiar. It dissolves the democratically-elected board controlling $100 million of clean public water, would disenfranchise 2.4 million Angelenos, yada, 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 you're all bored out of your minds, because you don't care. You don't care about $100 million of clean public water being sold off to the private water companies. You're all about that. You are owned by corporations. You should have big fat corporate sponsor stickers all over your body. You don't care about our public water being sold off. I'd like to just set the record straight on the problems that the board is having. It's two to three men. Robert Apadaca, who cost the Central Basin $670,000 by sexually harassing a contractor. That guy over there, John Osceuy, you instigated an assault against Letizia Vazquez in February of 2020. He proceeded to assault her, and you laughed. You're a creep.
Excuse me, sir.
You need to be recalled.
Sir.
You need to lose your assistant city manager position. And why you all are allowing somebody who thinks assault on women is funny to remain in this position, I cannot possibly fathom, especially from you, a self-professed feminist, Blanca Pacheco. The third guy, Diana Riggi, who is causing dysfunction on the Central Basin, threatened Martha Camacho Rodriguez and Phil Hawkins with physical violence. He put up his fist and said, "You better vote for this incredibly controversial meter charge, or else." So they got scared, and they did. And as a result, a lot of cities got scared, and they filed a lawsuit against Central Basin. This is entirely designed to make the basin look incompetent and dysfunctional, when it is not. All of this is by design, we know it, we're telling everybody we know to oppose this bill, and we will remember all of the people who tried to privatize our precious, clean public water, when hundreds of thousands of Angelenos are forced to drink filthy brown carcinogenic water. We will remember the crimes you committed, you can bet on that.
Are there any further?
Yes, I am very much in agreement with the gentleman who has spoken. So, I definitely oppose 625, and everything he just said is true, correct. Just cannot have this corrupted takeover of our water basin, not at all. So, it's a big NO in 625, can't have it. So it's no to 625. Stop the takeover, can't disenfranchise 2.5 million voters in southeast LA County. I oppose. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, anybody else wishing to speak? Please come forward.
So I'm glad that every time Alex Contreras speaks, you take notice, because it means that, you know, you're taking it seriously, and you understand that you don't belong there anymore. I'm gonna make the case why you shouldn't even be up here anymore. First off, you guys don't understand what the First Amendment is, and that was clearly evident when you tried to create an ad hoc committee. We had to have someone here school you guys and teach you where you were creating various How many months has it been, how many city councils have I called for the resignation of that man, John Osceuy, who is on video? He's on video instigating an assault. He's been caught making sexist comments, and you guys still are not firing him. You guys are doing nothing, you're remaining silent. So you guys are not doing your job, and you definitely don't care about the people in our community or the women in our community. That's another reason, because that makes you a hypocrite. If you claim to be a feminist, and then you turn around and let others violate our people and our communities, then you're not doing your job. You're engaged in a frivolous lawsuit, you guys know this. SB 625 was created by Christina Garcia on lies. The Central Basin is solvent, it's paid its debt, it's addressed all the issues regarding the audit, and to pretend that it isn't stable is a lie. So what you're doing, and what Downey needs to know, is that today you can all vote, you have a voice. If you want to be represented in the Central Basin, right now, our representative is Martha Camacho Rodriguez. You may or may not like her, if you like her, you could vote for her, if not, you may choose to vote for someone else, but you have the right to vote. By dissolving the board and passing this bill that you called into the assembly the other day without the awareness of these other council members, that's reported by Hughes News, too, you are trying to dissolve a democratically-elected agency that supports and represents 2 million people in the LA County, that's 24 cities. So, just so you guys know, if this bill passes, you will no longer be able to vote. They are attacking your voting rights. They are taking your representation away. What is that? That's a violation of our civil rights. So when we have people like Martin Luther King and all the great leaders fighting for us to be represented and have a voice, just to have criminals like Christina Garcia, Anthony Randon, and even you guys join in to support that with the help of criminals like John Osceuy, a water terrorist, you guys are attacking our communities of color and low income, and you guys should be made aware that taking the voices of the community
Thank you.
is racist.
Any other members of the audience wishing to speak? Seeing none, is there a, sorry?
Good evening, my name is Linda Bassett. I'm a concerned citizen, I'm in the Central Water Basin. I believe as a council, you have endorsed SB 625. I think you've made a grave, grave, grave error. You have some wonderful elected females on that board, and a gentleman also, who are making aware to the community that a grave injustice is being done, democracy is being undone. That board has been elected for 63 years, and you have now some looters in suits, some criminals dressed up real fancy, coming in and bamboozling all of us. I find it hard to believe myself, but I was just on a meeting yesterday, and I've never been in such a terrible meeting. I believe Mr. Hamilton over there was, Mr. Hamilton was running the Zoom meeting, he wasn't supposed to be. They, these, and Mr. Osceuy was also on there, and I don't know if it was him, but somebody was, wouldn't turn their, wouldn't turn their music down, or talking rudely. It was the most disorganized, terrible meeting I've ever been in, and it wasn't the elected members that were causing this problem. It was the, the three appointed members that were appointed because Christina Garcia wrote a bill, 1794, that put these retailers on our elected board. That's never been done before. Public-private partnership, they call it. I'd like you to have some people sitting on your board that weren't elected, that were from some other agency, that came in and disrupted anything you were trying to do for the people. Letizia Velasquez found that when she got first elected onto that board, that 2.75, $2,750,000 had been, a check had been written in, without going through the board, and it was put into what they called a slush fund, for Nassimin Lawyers, I believe, a Nassimin Law Firm, I couldn't, for something like that. But she came in, she took them to court, and found out that what they had done was wrong. She's telling us now that what is going on now is wrong, and I have looked into it very carefully, and I have lots of notes and documents, too much to tell you, but I'm telling you, you need to look at this before that board is dissolved. These crooks come in and loot our democracy and... These crooks come in and loot our democracy and make it so that we have no control over our water. This is liquid gold. Everybody knows this. People predict that the next wars will be over water. I'm telling you, there's a war going right on... Going on right now in our community, and that please stand up. The community should call Christina Garcia, tell her to pull the bill. Anthony Rendon's involved in this. There's a whole slew of people that we've elected and are not doing a public good service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any further speakers? Is there a motion to close public comment? Is there a second? So I know we've talked about this over and over and over again, but City Manager Levas, would you like to explain what SB 625 would in a sense do and...
Madam Mayor, I've actually explained this already, and quite frankly, in speaking to the choir, they know what it's about. So it's...
And please do not interfere, or else we will have you excused from the council chambers.
Why don't you just tell us where the bill's at?
Yes.
Where it's at right now?
What it does.
So the... I'm sorry. What was the question? Where it's at right now? Where it's at right now is that it's gone through the Assembly, and right now it's in the Senate. And so essentially, there's two things going on. There's two... There's... You have SB 625, which, quite frankly, is supported by 22 other cities. Cities of Whittier, Downey, Lakewood, Norwalk, Paramount, Southgate, Bell, Signal Hill, just to name a few. I don't think they all can be wrong, right? Or they all can be hoodwinked. But anyway, that's where the process is. I know they've said it's about privatization, but it's not about privatization. So essentially, there's two parallel tracks right now. So you have the Senate bill that's moving through the process that would essentially put it into a receivership under WRD, which is a public entity. It would go through a LAFCO process, which is a public entity process, right? And they would go through some recommendations. Ultimately, it would be... It's a public process, so there isn't... It isn't going from a public to a private entity right now. So it's going through that process. Number two is that it's also going through... There are a couple of lawsuits that are... Have been moving forward. So there's two things that are going on right now, and we'll see where it ends up at the end of the day. Everybody's going to have their say in this process, and the process will go through what it's going to go through, right? I mean, it's... It'll either fail or it won't, and at the end of the day, you know, we'll all live with whatever the results are, and we move forward. So same thing with the lawsuits. You know, we have a process we're going to go through. We're going to follow the process, and then we'll see what the outcome is.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry. No. The public comment period is over. This is a warning. Thank you, madam. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you.
Very civilized.
I apologize for that. Okay. Are we all doing good? All right. Thank you. Does anybody need to... Are you guys good on... You don't need a break? And we can proceed forward? Moving on?
Moving on.
Okay. Now's the time for consent calendar. Members of the public wishing to address the City Council regarding consent calendar items may now call our teleconference line at 562-299-6622. For those who submitted comments via email, your comments will be read into the record, and no further public comment via teleconference will be permitted. City Clerk Duarte, do we have any speakers?
We do not, Mayor.
City Clerk Duarte, have you received any written correspondence on consent calendar items to be read into the record?
We did not, Mayor.
Are there any members of the audience who wish to address the Council regarding consent calendar items? You may now come forward and form a line while maintaining social distancing. Seeing none, is there a motion to close public comment? Second?
I make a motion to adopt the consent calendar.
Are there any council members who want to abstain or remove an item?
I need to abstain from 21. I'm sorry. Here, disregard.
And Alex is okay?
To approve.
I second.
Okay. All right. City Clerk Duarte, can we take a roll call vote, please?
Mayor, I need to pull item number seven from the consent calendar because there was a typo on the date of the meeting minutes. Councilmember Ashton?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Saab?
Yes.
Councilmember Frometta?
Yes.
And Mayor Pacheco?
Yes.
The consent calendar was approved unanimously.
Thank you. Next up are two administrative reports. The first one is an urgency ordinance enacting a temporary moratorium on evictions of commercial tenants impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic and establishing a rent repayment period. Adopt an uncodified urgency ordinance of the City Council of the City of Downey pursuant to California Governance Code Section 8634 and Downey City Charter Sections 511 and 514, enacting a temporary moratorium on evictions of commercial tenants for non-payment of rent resulting from loss of income due to the COVID-19 pandemic, establishing a rent repayment period, and setting forth the facts constituting such urgency. City Managers Levas, do we have somebody giving us a report on item number 20?
Madam Mayor, that will be a presentation by our city attorney.
Thank you. So last meeting, you gave me direction to bring back an ordinance regarding the moratorium on the eviction of commercial tenants and establishing a repayment period, and so that ordinance is in front of you. The... Did you want to take a recess?
Sir? Yeah, we'll take... Are you sure? Okay.
So based on your direction, I present an urgency ordinance before you. Happy to take any questions or address any concerns that you might have for the ordinance. Otherwise, it's for the council action. It requires four-fifth vote since it's an urgency ordinance. So four of the five of you at least need to adopt this ordinance.
Do you have a public comment?
All right. Now's the time for public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the Council regarding item number 20 may now call our teleconference line at 562-299-6622. For those who submitted comments via email, your comments will be read into the record, and no further public comment via teleconference will be permitted. City Clerk Duarte, do we have any speakers?
Yes, Mayor, we have one call coming in.
Okay.
Please state your name and begin speaking.
Fat cunt bitches. Why did you cut me off? You cut me off my general public comment, you slimy bitches. For this reason why the rent's so high in Downey. People can't afford the rent. People can't afford the commercial rent in the promenade. That's why the promenade looks like a ghost town off of Firestone as well, you dumb bitches. Yeah, fix your water problem, too, you fucking thieves. You're nothing but criminals. Look at Fat Frometta. She looks like Santa Claus. All she needs is a beard, then she can give out rent vouchers to niggers who don't pay or have money to pay the rent, you dumb fat slobs. So next time, make sure the telephone is picked up. Make sure you answer the phone, Ms. Duarte, because those dumb fucks up there, look at them. All one, two, three, four. Not you, Sean, but the four there. Ride your fucking bike and lose weight, you bitches. That's why you put a bike lane before putting rent on the table for children and their families to have a place to call home. Not like Roy Baller, that fucking cunt stupid bitch, and that Tony Mendoza and his sexual harassment. John F. Hahn. John F. Hahn. You have to come to the Downey meetings so we can see what real sea breeze looks like when the rent is too high and you oust people from providing themselves a place to call home in San Pedro. John F. Hahn. Ms. Bass. Kamala Harris. BLM. Brown Lives Matter. Help us with the rent. Pay the rent, you bitches, and get a fucking job.
He's done? Are there any other speakers?
No, Mayor.
Do we... Have we received any written correspondence regarding this item to be read into the record?
We did not, Mayor.
Members of the audience who wish to address the Council regarding item number 20 may now come forward and form a line while maintaining social distancing. Seeing none, do we have a motion to close? Second? Thank you.
That would be a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Is there a motion?
It's second.
I'll move.
Okay. Thank you. City Clerk Duarte, can we take a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Councilmember Ashton? Councilmember Rodriguez? Councilmember Saab?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Frometta?
Yes.
And Mayor Pacheco?
Yes. And next up, we have the last item, is the urgency ordinance enacting a temporary moratorium on evictions of residential tenants impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic and establishing a rent repayment period. Thank you.
On the last item, the motion carried. Okay. Thank you. So on this one, it's similar to the commercial tenants urgency ordinance. This one applies to residential renters. It places a moratorium on evictions until July 28th. It also establishes a repayment period of... It is two months for every month in arrears that a renter has not paid rent. So that's similar to the first ordinance. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any. Otherwise, this requires four-fifth vote as well to adopt.
I can't even hear you.
I said you take public comment.
I'll take public comment. Sorry, it's a little hard to hear. Okay. Members of the public wishing to address the Council regarding item number 21 may now call our teleconference line at 562-299-6622. For those who submitted comments via email, your comments will be read into the record, and no further public comment via teleconference will be permitted. City Clerk Duarte, do we have any speakers?
We do, Mayor.
Hi, please state your name and begin speaking.
Hi, this is Alexandria Contreras. Concerning the rental moratorium, what we have proposed, quite frankly, is not good enough for the people who live here. We need an extension much longer than July 28th. I would recommend at least another six months, as well as an extension for payback of rent. With people being out of work for the past three, four months, and now finally getting back to work, it's not enough time for them to come up with the back pay rent, as well as get back on their feet, along with all the other bills that they've fallen behind. As a renter myself, I know exactly what that struggle can look like, and we already lost so many community members due to the failure of an eviction moratorium back before Christmas, and I'm worried that we're going to lose even more without better response from the city council. So I would actually like to see an improvement on this proposal to extending the deadline for evictions, as well as extending the length of time to pay back rent.
Is that all, Ms. Contreras?
Oh, I'm so sorry. I thought...
Go ahead. You still have time. I'm not sure if you want to continue speaking.
And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other speakers?
Yes, Mayor. One more call. Please state your name and begin speaking.
Madam Mayor, your favorite constituent, Herman Herman, the same Herman that the patriot wrote about. But you forget, I'm in support of those who need their rents paid, who need extensions to pay their rent, and keep webbacks like you, Ms. Pacheco, and your families in the state of California before the FBI raids your records and finds out that you're like Jose Wezar, a fucking webback taking advantage of the American dream.
Herman, stay on topic.
I am on topic. It's about rent, and you know that people can't pay their rent because they haven't worked in the last two to three fucking months. Give people the chance to get back on their feet. Everyone deserves a right to have their rent paid by the government. That's what the stimulus check were. Thank you, Donald Trump, for my stimulus check. Fuck California Democrats. Fuck Nancy Pelosi, and fuck you Gavin Newsom and those who got us into this problem of rent. And especially you, Jose Wezar, you fucking sellout, pay-to-play nigger. That's the reason why we're all in trouble. Billionaire motherfucker taking bribes. Billionaire corruption. All fucking criminals. Good night, sweethearts.
Are there any other callers?
No, Mayor.
Have we received any written correspondence regarding item number 21 to be read into the record?
We did not, Mayor.
Members of the audience who wish to address the Council regarding item number 21 may now come forward and form a line while maintaining social distancing. Seeing none, is there a motion to close public comment?
I moved.
Second? Is there a motion to adopt?
Second.
City Clerk Duarte, can we take a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Ashton?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez is abstaining. Councilmember Saab?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Frometta?
Yes.
And Mayor Pacheco?
Yes.
The motion is approved with Councilmember Rodriguez abstaining.
Thank you very much. City Manager Levas, it's been an eventful night. Do you have any comments?
No, I think it's all been said, so thank you.
Thank you. City Council meeting is now adjourned in memory of the lives affected by COVID-19 and the following fallen officers. Officer Julian Keen Jr., Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission, Florida; Agent Joanne Morton, U.S. Department of Homeland Security; Officer Dale T. Province Jr., Jefferson Hillsboro Police Department, Pennsylvania; Deputy Sheriff James Blair Simpson, County Sheriff's Office, Mississippi; Sergeant Damon Gutz Willer, Santa Cruz County Sheriff's Office, California; and victims of the earthquake in Oaxaca, Mexico. A moment of silence. Meeting adjourned.